Good evening. Let me call the meeting of Stillwater Plan Commission to Order. Item number two, Land Use Items for Discussion and Possible Action. Two A, Stillwater Utility Authority MAP Amendment Res zoning requests for review and approval of a MAP amendment to rezone property addressed 2000 East Airport Road from IG Industrial General to P Public. Mr. Coots?
Tom Coots, Development Services. Property located at the corner of Airport and Jardoe Road. Property is recently acquired through a land swap agreement by the City of Stillwater from State of Oklahoma. And it is where the airport is planned to be, not airport, power plant, sorry, is planned to be constructed on the property. Power plant would be in allowed use in the IG zoning district. It is also allowed use in the public zoning district since, and the property is surrounded on the northwest and south sides by the IG General Industrial District. The red lines you see on the map on the east side is the city limits line, so east of the city limits line is going to be unincorporated Payne County. So that's what we have. Findings include this is compatible with the C-3 plan. It's a city property. C-3 plan throughout on the maps show publicly owned property basically as zoned public. It is adjacent to IG zoning. Utility, once again, is allowed in both areas. Public zoning is for public uses and for city owned properties. And so that's what we have here. And that's why we're asking to have this property rezoned to the public district. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Let me open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this MAP amendment? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody that would like to speak against this MAP amendment? Not seeing. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Coots?
We have three alternatives. We can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented. We can find that the MAP amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based on impacts to the surrounding vicinity and to not recommend the City Council approve the MAP amendment or if you find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Any comments? Start her motion.
Make a motion to accept staff findings, recommend approval of the MAP amendment.
Second.
Motion passes five to zero. So to item two B, Robert Kearns, MAP amendment rezoning, request for review and approval of a MAP amendment to rezonate a portion of property address 799 East Mercury Avenue from IG Industrial General to CS Commercial Shopping. Mr. Coots?
Just a moment. All right, Tom Coots, Development Services. The subject property is, all right, let me get my, sorry, roughly five acres. The west five acres of this large property that's owned by Robert Kearns, this property currently is zoned IG, which is General Industrial. So the request is to go to CS Commercial Shopping. CS is located to the south of the subject property. To the west is zone CG, which is Commercial General, similar but a little different. In the north of the property is RTM, which is residential two-family and multifamily, is better known as Aspen Heights. And to the south of the property, I should have pointed out, is where the Academy Sports Development is built. The property, I should point out, is it's not adjacent to the Lakeview Ridge subdivision. Lakeview Ridge is the area here, zoned RSS, which is going to be, they share just a point right there. So, staff findings, did find that this would be comparable with the C-3 plan and should clarify that a little bit, in that if you look literally at what the future land use map that was associated with the C-3 plan says, the entire Kearns property was said to be suitable for residential uses. When you take a finer look and look at how the property, the subject property, the portion of the larger property, is adjacent to commercial zonings, like I said, it's adjacent to commercial zoning. So we do feel that it's compatible with the intent of the C-3 plan because the C-3 plan didn't show properties being split, different land uses. So it is adjacent to CS Commercial Shopping and CG Commercial General zoning. Mercury Avenue is a collector street. It gathers traffic and gets it to Perkins Road, which is the main thoroughfare. Commercial uses are located in the area and this would be basically an extension of those commercial uses. Do we have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you. Let me open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this MAP amendment? Please state your name and address.
Roger Gose, 113 East State, on behalf of Mr. Kearns, is what it is. We're asking for CS zoning, you know, as staff described. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else that'd like to speak in favor of this? Anybody that'd like to speak in opposition of this MAP amendment?
Kyle Lucas, 802 East Lauren Lane. The adjacent, I don't know, my fence post is the one that's going to be catty corner to this proposed area. It's not that my wife and I and our newborn are opposed to this. The problem that we have is we want clarification as to some of the stuff that could be happening. With the Academy, we were, we're not opposed to Stillwater growing, but with the Academy, we were promised stuff by certain people that there wouldn't be lights shining directly into our house, but I have pictures that there are parking lot lights that shine directly into my baby girl's window. We were told by the developer and from Academy that they would look into extra screening and get back to us. That was not done. We were told that when we originally met with Mr. Gose, that screening could either be on the Academy side of the property or our side. We had discussed it being on the Academy side. That didn't get told back to the Academy developers. So there's zero screening other than a six-foot privacy fence. The big thing for us is the lighting. And so now with a property that's already elevated at least 10 feet above where our elevation is for our house, the lights will be shown, or will shine directly more into our house and onto our property. And so we just want clarification as to how we can mitigate some of the damages to our property value, to our property. Like I said, with the Academy lights, they don't get turned off till midnight. Well, when you're trying to put a newborn down, you want to put them down a lot before midnight, and then they kick back on by about 5:30 in the morning. So there's only about five and a half hours where there's not a parking lot light shining directly onto our property. We've tried to work with the developers in the past to help mitigate damages between our neighborhood and the development. And a lot of our requests fall on deaf ears or don't get met. So I just want you to take that into consideration for us as a neighborhood.
Thank you. Anybody else in opposition to this MAP amendment? Let me close the public hearing. Mr. Gose, do you want to say something?
I understand Mr. Lucas's concerns about the existing Academy. This is the property to the north and the lighting meets the city code. The screening meets the city code. Maybe the code needs to be changed. And I have discussed personally numerous times with the developer, doing something else for that screening on that wall of that house. I've got pictures of it at night if anybody wants to see it. But that site meets the city code, this site will meet the city code. Thank you.
So close the public hearing. Mr. Coots, do you want to say anything?
Didn't know if you wanted me to go into the uses that are allowed in the, between the currently zoned IG district and the CS proposed.
So why don't you go into that?
Okay.
CS proposed and go through that.
All right.
And then my understanding is the same as Mr. Gose, that the development south here didn't meet code and the six-foot privacy fence does meet code.
Okay. I'll start with the CS Commercial Shopping District allows for a variety of different uses, bed and breakfast, what's this, hotel motel, beverage services, which would be like places that just sell beverages, which would include bars, educational services like schools, financial institutions, banks, food services, would be restaurants, freestanding self-services like an ATM, information, that's printing and things like that, mixed uses, that's commercial with residential above, personal laundry services, personal storage and warehousing, professional administrative offices, and retail trade. And some other uses are allowed with specific use permits, but those come back through public hearing, if one of those types of uses is proposed. Versus the IG, which is the General Industrial District, which arguably is the head, allows for the heaviest uses in the city, allows for such uses, I'll just pick a few out rather than naming all of them, but generally manufacturing type uses, so big plants, manufacturing things, oil and gas industry services, communications towers, transportation activities, so it'd be like a yard with, where all the semi-trucks park and do their thing, utilities, including such things as like a power plant, and things like that. And then a variety of even heavier uses with a specific use permit. So the proposed zoning, I would say, is definitely a downgrade from what is allowed currently on the property. And then as far as Academy site goes, the correct, what is required between residential and commercial for separation is a screening of some sort. They chose to go with the route of a six-foot privacy fence that does meet the code. They also turned in a photometrics plan for the lighting, which demonstrated that the lighting was not going to increase off the property. This is the first I've heard that the lighting may have increased going off the property, so it'd be worthwhile to at least check that out and make sure that as constructed-
So you're going to follow up so the city checks that out?
Yes. But as planned, it would have met what was turned in, met code. And any development on this property would also be subject to the same requirements.
So why don't you go through the alternatives and we'll see if we've got any questions?
Okay. We can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented. We can find that the MAP amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and to not recommend the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date. So do we have any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you. Any finding commission discussion? Start her motion.
Well, discussion wise, I think it's definitely a downzoning to what could potentially be there. And it, we do have it on basically the same type zoning on two sides, so personally I don't have a problem with downgrading the zoning to CS.
Do we know if there's a plan to develop it either way? Or only a plan to develop it if it's rezoned?
We don't know whether there's a plan to develop it either way, nor is that really an appropriate question. But if we don't change the zoning, it is a possibility it could be developed. Does that respond to your question?
It does, thank you.
And I don't know whether the developer's thinking about development anytime soon. So that's not a requirement to request rezoning.
Sure.
Any other questions coming? Start her motion.
I'll make a motion to accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented.
Second.
Let's vote.
I waited too long.
It passes five to zero. Item number three, Plans, Policy Orders for Discussion and Possible Action. Three A, City of Stillwater Land Development Code Amendment, request to review and create a new codes section for a new zoning district titled Neighborhood Transition Zone and shall be located in Chapter 23, Article 6.
Thank you Chairman Buker. Aaron Bagley, Development Services here to have a discussion with you on a proposed new land use classification zoning called Neighborhood Transition Zoning. This would add to our zoning classification table, would include an additional zoning classification, that would be an additional tool in our toolbox, that if an applicant wanted to come in and request rezoning, then this would be another residential zoning designation that they would be able to pick from if approved by you and City Council. Just a little, I'm going to go through some of the high points of the, what's included in the proposed text amendment. Certainly want to have a discussion with y'all as a commission and get your input and your thoughts. And we'll have about three slides here and we'll take questions after that if that's all right with y'all. The permitted uses in a neighborhood transition zoning are the NTZ, as we're calling it for short, is single-family homes, two-family homes, otherwise known as duplex, and to allow townhomes, which townhomes are generally connected homes that are, you know, not apartment complex sized, connected, very small lots, zero-lot line type development. Couple of the proposed setbacks in order to make this a neighborhood transition from a single-family zoning RSS or RSL to a more intense zoning as multifamily or commercial or even possibly industrial, if applicant chooses to do so, would be increased setbacks adjacent to platted neighborhoods. This would be a platted subdivision, instead of just having a traditional setback on the side yard, setback of five feet, or rear yard setback of 20 feet, this would be 30 feet, as proposed. Also, as the code is written and proposed, there would be no accessory buildings in the neighborhood setback, this 30-foot setback either in the rear yard or the side yard setback. The zone would also have a building height restricted. Single-family building height is generally 35 feet, but this one would be a little bit different, that it, the building height would be restricted to the average height of the adjoining platted neighborhood. So if it was, you know, the average height in that neighborhood was 25 feet, this neighborhood adjacent to it in the zone would have 25-foot height restriction, as an example. The density requirement would be 10 dwelling units per acre and 46 persons per acre for Findings is this will not cause a safety concern, encourage appropriate type of development within Stillwater, and a neighborhood transition zone has a needed land use classification within the city. Any questions at this point?
I have a few.
Okay.
Couple of things, Aaron. Just wanted to make sure I understood this, that this is just another available type zoning.
Correct.
It's not something that's required. It's an option for applicant if they come in, if this helps with their project, it's out there and available.
That is correct. And it's additional zoning classification, similar to the high-rise district that came in several years ago. It's another land use that we've had several conversations with developers in the past. It's one that we feel that we need to have in our zoning ordinance to have a little more transition from single-family houses to more intense uses. As we know, if you want to increase stair step up, you don't want to have single-family and then, you know, paper.
It's an option, not a mandate.
It is, yes, it is an option, not a mandate. It will not force us on to find anybody. It's just another rezoning or zoning designation that if applicant wanted it, they could come and petition the city, just like any other MAP amendment that has came tonight.
Right. Couple other questions. I know that we talked about the maximum height being based on an average height of the existing structures and adjacent established neighborhoods. I don't know that that's actually possible to come up with that number. And who would come up with that number?
The city would determine that number. We would actually come out and do site survey in the neighborhood and look at existing homes to see what is there, do some site takeoffs, maybe come back, pull the files, the home files for the properties to see what the height of the housing that has been constructed there, to see what the actual height of the house is as regard to how our zoning code designs it, defines it. And we would, we look at that and take an average of the neighborhood of existing homes. Generally, most homes are similar heights, they're all single stories or two stories, and we'd average it out that way.
Okay. Other question, kind of on that same vein. I know a lot of times townhouses are designed as two stories. And, you know, you'll have your kitchen dining and on first floor and bedrooms on top or bedroom on top. You know, if you have an older neighborhood, a 70's neighborhood, let's say, that's all four 12-pitch roofs, you know, and their heights are 15 feet, you're not going to be able to do a two-story townhome in that height. And that's a concern for me.
That's a very valid concern, but this also gives you more options if you're adjacent to a newer neighborhood, which I think a lot of these transition zones would be because it had to be adjacent to a platted neighborhood or a platted subdivision that has homes that are larger homes, that have higher square footage. It would allow for an increase in density, but also allow, instead of duplexes or single-family, you could have townhomes, increase the height with that adjoining neighborhood, which might be more economical for the developer or the builder, and then increase the green space on the property, because you'd still be limited to 12 dwelling, 10 dwelling units per acre.
Okay. Also, just kind of for the record, notice that if you're looking at doing duplexes, actually it's, I think currently in RT, you're allowed 11 dwelling units per acre, which this, with this in the transition zone, you'd only be allowed 10, is that correct?
That is correct. It would, it'd be a decrease, more of a transition, and to allow for larger lots to provide more of a buffer from the platted neighborhood to the transition zone to a more intense use down the road.
And then I also noticed that we'd shown 46 persons per acre. How are you going to know that?
That is of concern to staff as well. It's very difficult to count persons or people in a building in a single-family house. It's harder to define that. I mean, you could define that as number of bedrooms, but that, you know, if it takes 10 or 15 years to develop a neighborhood, that would be very difficult on staff and one that staff has major concerns about as well. As this came to us, that was the number one thing that we have, and would definitely like some input from y'all on that particularly, because as you rightfully said, it's very difficult to count that because, you know, one house might have five bedrooms, but you might have eight people living in it because you've got three sets of twins.
Right.
So, but certainly like input from you on that.
Sure. Go ahead, Mike.
Are there other cities that have adopted a similar code? Are you familiar with the other cities?
I am not familiar with, this city has done this, but I have seen it in plenty of codes across the US. A lot of planning conferences, national, talk about zoning transitional zones between commercial uses and residential uses as, you know, as we recently passed former base codes here, that's a blend there. That's a, you have mixed uses. And a lot of times in commercial areas now, the popular form of development is retail or commercial and food services on the first floor and the second, third floor are residential structures. And this would allow for more of a smooth transition from single-family residential duplexes, maybe townhomes or larger lot, single-family with increased setbacks, and then that mixed use in a commercial zone.
Just one other concern. It's noted that there's no additional structures or uses allowed within the 30-foot setback of neighborhood property lines. You know, I guess my concern is if a person goes in with single-family, which is allowed in this transitional zone, and wants to put a storage shed back there or a storm shelter in their backyard, would this limit them from doing that as it's written?
As it is written, it would limit them to putting it within the 30-foot setback against the neighborhood, the adjoining neighborhood. It is, it is something that if the house was built at the 30-foot setback line, they might not be able to even put a storm shelter, as you rightfully mentioned, in their backyard. We would certainly like some input from the commissioners as well on this point. Generally, you can have accessory structures up to three feet from property lines, rear property lines, in RSS and RSL districts now, such as storm shelters, storage buildings and all that, so we'd like input.
Under that scenario, could they go for the Board of Adjustment to have the storm shelter in that 30-foot or?
That would be a various request and it would go to Board of Adjustment versus coming to Planning Commission.
So there's a process to do that for that type of structure?
That is correct. And you're also, if you wanted to change that, you could, you know, change the setback, have it within 10, 15 feet, 20 feet, whatever you choose to sew, or you could also limit that accessory structure can't be larger than X number of square feet. That way you can't put a gigantic garage in your backyard, but you can have your small storage shed to put your tools in, park your lawnmower in, and put your kids' playset in the backyard or put the storm shelter. Any other questions?
That's all the questions I have for now, Aaron.
How'd you come up with the 30-foot?
The 30-foot came out of our Ahoc Land Development Committee. A discussion with them, they suggested that as a more of a larger buffer zone between residential, single-family residential, but more intense use in this transition zone. I think it's more in line with the commercial zone, the distance between commercial uses and residential, because for commercial uses, it's 25-foot rear yard setbacks.
But in this transition zoning, commercial uses-
Will not be allowed.
Will not be allowed.
I was using that as an example, sir.
I understand. I'm trying to digest all this.
I certainly understand. It's what you can't-
So, so I'm just trying to figure all this stuff out. Any other questions from any other commissioners?
I was wondering what the reason was for the 46-person occupancy?
That came out of the Land Development Ahoc Committee as a suggestion. Basically, 46, you've got 10 dwelling units, that's 4.5 people per dwelling unit, is how I would say they came up with it. I was unfortunately not a part of that conversation at that time. Any other questions?
If I could, just right quickly, just wanted to make sure that everybody is on the same page with the intent of this, that this would not be for a 100-acre parcel of land. It would primarily be for use in a 100-acre parcel of land, having some stair-stepped zoning designations on it, where maybe from the single-family, you have this neighborhood transition zone, a strip to actually act as the transition zone or the buffer area, and then you would work your way on, on that same parcel, adjacent parcel, whatever, own with the density, the intensity, the height, the less setback, something like that. So the intent of this is not like we have an RSS, RSL, CS, high-rise district, where you have large, large, large acreages zoned one way. This is to complement and to help separate those less compatible uses from each other, primarily in just a little strip area. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. My initial concern from reading this is how do you enforce and follow up with 46 persons per acre? I'm not sure how you're going to administer that. I'd rather see something like maximum threshold of 10 dwelling units per acre and a maximum of 40 bedrooms per acre. And then I have something that I can look at the plans and follow up on versus 46 people.
Yes, that, the number of bedrooms is much more measurable than the number of people.
You know, I'm an engineer, I like to measure things.
Yes, sir. You mathematician, you.
So, so I'd like to see something- So, so I'd like to see something that's more measurable, do you have a problem with that?
No, not at all, that's why, as Aaron indicated, he had underlined that 46 persons per acre. Because that was, we were even struggling with that, we were attempting to create a true transition area. And it would be measured as such with the density, the height restrictions and the people density restrictions, but bedrooms can operate in a similar fashion.
Personally, I'd just like to see it gone and let it depend on the 10 dwelling units. That's gonna drive, and the lot size is gonna drive how many bedrooms or people you can get on it anyway, that's my opinion.
The, the height of the average neighborhood adjacent is going to also.
True.
Drive it as well.
That's, that's a good point.
I should open a public hearing, is anybody here to voice in favor of this?
How about on the line? Roger Coes, 113 East State.
That is appropriate.
On the line?
On the line, yes, sir.
Fifth line down in report, why do we need this? Possible resolution to pending litigation. We adopt an ordinance every time we need to get out of some litigation, our books would be twice as thick and nobody can make it through what we've got now. Mr. Baggerly said that there's been several instances where this is needed. In my 30 years, I can't come up with others right now except the elephant in the room, which is right east of the property that y'all just recommended rezoning. You know, to ease the transition from platted neighborhoods to, this penalizes the person abutting a single-family neighborhood unless he can go adjacent to there and go into RS, you know, if it's an RSS, he can go in with RSS. He could put two-story in, he could have the rear 20-foot rear yard setbacks, he could do everything, but if he wants to do, if, if, I don't know how this is gonna be used, I really don't. If, if adjacent neighbors want to come in, or neighbor, landowner wants to come in and use, he wants to go for RSS and the city says, no, you gotta have this transitional zone, then the neighborhood is just posing a lot of additional burden on that adjacent property owner. I can understand, you know, if it's a factory or a big trend, it, um, commercial, but it, it penalizes the guy next door who's last in.
I think too, Roger, just for clarification, it's not gonna be a mandate, it's gonna be something an applicant could use. If it's, I mean.
You mean, if you're just flat not gonna get the RSS, you can back up to the transition zone.
Well, that'll be the, that'll be the applicant.
I mean, that's why they're using a lawsuit, if you want the truth.
I don't know all that, but you know what I'm saying, it's not something that you have to do, and I guess that's the point.
Well, then why put it on?
Because other projects may have it, so I just wanted to make that point.
Again, in 30 years, I'd like to know what the others were.
Again, I just want to make that point, it's not a mandate.
Household size in Stillwater according to census is 2.13 persons per household, family size is 2.8. I don't know why the difference, but that's what the census says. And I think the four, I, I disagree, I don't know how you police the 46, but if you had six persons at each house, a six-bedroom house, yeah, you'd hit 60. But I don't know how you're gonna police it, just, I'll look that up while we're discussing. Townhomes, basically you couldn't build in this because traditionally townhomes are two-story. And if you're abutting a traditional single-family, single-story neighborhood, which we still have, you couldn't build townhomes. On the accessory use, you might consider if you're gonna leave that 30-foot rear yard, that they couldn't put an accessory structure in the rear 20 feet. That would allow you 10-foot there to put a storage building in or to put a storm shelter or something like that. I'm sure nobody wants them right up against their fence, so that might be a way to modify that. I mean, the 10 units per acre does give the person doing this a, a little bit of a benefit instead of eight units per acre, so. That was my comments, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else that wishes to speak for this or on the line? Is anybody want to speak against this? I will close the public hearing.
Any other questions for staff?
I think you answered most of my questions. Again, I think it firstly, I think we just need to get rid of the persons per acre, stay with the dwelling units. Still having a little trouble with the average height, I understand the intent, that we just don't want to get something that overpowers what's next to it, I do understand that, but I just, I, I don't think it should be a burden that should be put on the applicant, applicant to figure that out. If the city has a way to figure it out, then I could probably live with that a little better, but I hate to see it be another thing that, that a developer and applicant has to go pay for to figure out average height of the existing neighborhood. And what if you have multiple neighborhoods, you know, you have one on this side and one on this side, you know, so that can be a big can of worms.
May I address that, sir?
Yes, please.
The, the applicant would not be responsible for determining the height of the adjacent neighborhood, that would fall solely on staff, city staff to do that, and we would not put that unnecessary burden on them to determine that. If this zoning district was to come through and some, and it was to, an applicant was to apply for and it was, their property was designated as neighborhood transition zoning, at that point, we would go into the adjacent neighborhood and determine the, the average height. And at that point, apply that to that so that they would be able to understand that, hey, this is your zoning, as before that, you're only going to be able to build to X number of feet in height. At that point, to take that, that off the applicant, that'd be an undue hardship on them, we feel. And also, certainly not disagree with you more on the, the, or couldn't agree with you more on the striking the 46 persons per acre, I think that's a very acceptable alternative at this point for this zoning designation.
Well, and I appreciate the clarification on that, and, and again, I'm, I'm not opposed to this transitional zone, I just think we need to tweak it a little bit. Yeah, and, you know, obviously I want everybody's input, but I appreciate that.
What would be your comment to changing two setbacks, B, from the 30 foot to, from 30-foot to 20-foot?
On B for the side yard.
And C would be change from 30-foot to 20-foot?
I think that'd be very appropriate, it would be in line with other residential zoning districts for RSS, RSL and RT, be in line with those.
That's, that's why I keep with those numbers. Let me, I'll put a brainstorm here for a moment.
Right.
Item C1, I can see in my mind measuring the adjacent structure neighborhood height. But my challenge in my mind is I want the structures next to that neighborhood not to be additional height. But if it's 100-foot in, I'm thinking the height can go up another story and we can have, transition means I'm transitioning from something that's same height of the neighborhood. And then two or three houses in, it can go up to a townhouse and it, and it's affecting within that neighborhood, to me, that's transition.
I, I see your point there, I believe Ms. Dennison brought up a good point that this would be for limited strips of, of development, you would not see this for the massive 100, 200-track subdivisions. You would see this for smaller tracks of subdivision, two, three, maybe four acres or narrow strips of land where you'd only see one row of residential structures. Where you could, you could stair step in, you have the neighborhood transition zone, have your duplexes or have your single-family homes that are only, for example, 25-foot high, then, you know, the next strip of land could be, you know, apartment complexes, which would only be two to three stories high and kind of stair step up to a more intense use in height.
But under this, they couldn't stair step up?
Not with the zoning district.
Well, if they could designate only the, the first 100 feet where they have 100-foot deep lots as the transitional zoning, and then step up to higher intensity zoning from there, I think that's the intent.
That's the intent.
But as I read that, doesn't allow it.
It's all in how you, where, where you ask for that zoning yet.
Okay.
When you make the application, it's way under standard, is that the intent?
That is a fantastic way of describing it, Dusty.
Okay.
That would, it would, we wouldn't see this for, you know, 1,200 linear foot lot, more than likely, you'd see it for 100, 150-foot wide area just as a transition zone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion before I go to alternatives?
Would you present the alternatives?
Alternatives, number one, accept staff's findings and recommend approval. Number two is accept findings or recommend that the City Council approve the proposed text amendments with identified changes. Number three, find the proposed text amendments are not needed and recommend that they not be approved by City Council. Any other questions for staff?
Discussion?
I've got similar concerns that, that Dusty has, but I think we've discussed some alternatives that I'm, or changes that I'm comfortable with. The maximum gross density, I'm with Dusty on that one, I would prefer just to see the number of persons taken out and let it be handled with a number of dwellings. I'm also with Mr. Bukert on the setback, on to the 20-foot setback. So for me, if those two changes were made, I'd be comfortable with moving forward on this.
Any other discussion?
I think with that 20-foot setback also, that would take care hopefully of my concern with the accessory structures in the, in the rear yards, so.
Rick, you wanna make a motion to that?
Oh, boy. Okay, so, help me out with the magic screen. Okay, I make a motion that we accept staff finding with recommended changes, recommend approval with identified changes. The first one being, we eliminate the 46-person-per-acre requirement on, let's see if I can get a, a number on here.
D.
D, item D, and with a second change being item E5. Wait, sorry, that's the wrong one.
C2B1 and C2.
C1.
C1.
Correct, changing that, absolutely.
Although I had written down, E5 needs to be changed to 20-foot.
Also.
So you are correct, Rick, in my opinion, so the, the three places that says 30-foot needs to be 20-foot.
That's probably a good way to say that, yeah.
It's a great way to say that.
You're our second to the motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Let's vote. Five-zero for the Land Development Code Amendment as changed. Item number four, approval of the meeting summary for discussion of possible action, approval of the regular meeting summary of July 7th, 2015.
Move to approve.
Second.
Let's vote. Five yes votes. Number five, Mrs. Sizer, for staff for a discussion, election plan commission meeting, August 4th, 2015. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We stand adjourned, thank you very much.